I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Garza, could you please call the roll?
Yes. Chairman Di Maria.
Here.
Vice Chairman Albrecht.
Here.
Mrs. Kiefer.
Here.
Mr. Hanlon.
Here.
Mrs. Seberg.
Here.
Mrs. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Morales.
Here.
Mr. Anderson.
Here.
Thank you. Are there additions or deletions to the agenda?
There are. On the consent agenda, we have the school board minutes, student services, student transfer requests, under personnel, ratification of personnel. And on the discussion agenda, policies, policies on Section B, C, D, E, and K.
Thank you. Do we have any spotlights?
We do.
Ms. Rafford, come on up.
Good evening. Thank you Chairman Di Maria, Dr. McGurk, other members of the board. Good evening to you and good evening to everyone that's here tonight. We do have a little variant for our spotlights for tonight and announcements. I'm going to take a moment to introduce Mr. Dave Ryan, who is our Director of Assessment and Accountability, and he's going to provide a little update about feedback for the strategic plan process.
Thank you. Chairman Di Maria, members of the board, I just wanted to give you a quick update on the public comments that we've received to date. We've received two comments. One from a student who had a very good comment, was concerned about collaboration and collaborative projects and workloads, distributive equally among the members of those groups, and we'll be sharing those comments with you when we consolidate everything for the next meeting. And we had a parent comment about the CT program and the internships and what they included, and his concerns about ensuring that the CT program is robust and included not just college readiness but career readiness. Thank you.
We're also continuing to receive feedback for the strategic plan through September 30th, so we want to encourage all of our watchers out there to please go onto the website and offer those comments through our Let's Talk platform. We'll also be sending out a reminder to our families so that they can click on it directly and go out there and give us some feedback, so we want to get as much as we can. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, so our next spotlight for tonight is about the V S B A Academy Awards. This is based on participation in professional development for our board members, and the certificates are provided to us by V S B A, and they ask that we do share these with you all publicly, and we would like the opportunity to do that tonight. A lot of people don't know that our board members do participate in professional development concerning how to lead, you know, school districts and everything, and so certainly we appreciate the time that you spend outside of the city of Manassas, whether it be in Charlottesville or down in Williamsburg at the many Richmond, the many conferences that you attend and workshops. We have five levels of award based on credits, and this covers a timeframe between July 1st and June 30th of each year. So each one is based on credits, and we would like to start with the Award of Recognition, which goes to, this is out for the 16, 17 school year, Robin Williams, Sanford Williams, Peter O'Hanlon, and Alga Garza. Each of them received the Award of Recognition for their participation this year, over the last year, excuse me. The Award of Achievement is accompanied by a bronze pin, and that award for last year is for Almia Rafford, so you can just hold my hand. I have the privilege of participating in some V S B A conferences as well. Our next award level is Award of Excellence, and these recipients receive a silver pin along with their certificate. Tim Di Maria, this is over a two-year period, 2015 to 2017. Tim Di Maria, Kristen Kiefer, also our Deputy Clerk of the Board, Lee Miller, in her absence, she received an Award of Excellence, and Suzanne Seberg received an Award of Excellence. And then our final two recipients are for the Award of Distinction, and they receive a starfish pin for their service within V S B A. And I will say that these two people will also be recognized during a special luncheon that V S B A hosts during the state conference that they hold in Williamsburg in November. And those two are Mr. Scott Albrecht, who is our President-elect for V S B A, which you know you do a lot through the service there, and then also Dr. McGurk. So congratulations to all of you, and as I said before, we appreciate everything that you do to help what you do here. We know that those workshops and those conferences only help make you a better leader as you serve the students and the staff here at Manassas City Public Schools, so we say thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, Dr. McGurk, thank you.
Okay. Now normally when we have the spotlights, everybody who got spotlighted leaves. I got a motion, I could get on. This would be good, this would be six minutes, we're out of here. But I think if the people are going to present, might take a faster. Yeah, well, you know, I don't know, they might mind not to be here too. Board committee reports, academics, Mr. Williams.
No report.
Thank you, sir. Educational support, Mr. Albrecht.
No report.
Policy, Ms. Kiefer.
Yes, we have a discussion agenda.
Thank you. Finance, Mr. Albrecht.
Finance committee met on the 14th, and you'll see some of the output of that this evening.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Seberg, personnel.
No report.
Thank you. Rolling now. Board member comments, we are going to start with Mr. Morales.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This past Monday at Osborne, we held our back-to-school night, which was a complete success. Parents and students were able to meet their teachers and view multiple programs offered at Osborne. In addition, this Sunday, there will be a banquet at Osborne High School at 5:30 p.m. where four out of 13 U C candidates will be allowed to attend a trip to St. Louis. These students have been recognized for their leadership roles in the community, so be sure to laud them for their achievements. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We started getting ready for Spirit Week at Osborne High. This afternoon, we had window decorations, and they continue until Friday. The homecoming game is Friday, October 6th, and the dance is the next night. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Hanlon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations to all the board members and those who support the board on their achievements with the V S B A. To echo what our young students said, I attended some of the back-to-school nights myself and have been very excited by the great turnout of all the parents there. I've also seen an increase in attendance at our school athletic events, so getting involved in and supporting your children's schools is one of the best ways to help your child succeed. Another key to student success is reading, and that's something we're going to be stressing quite a bit. When they are young, read to them every day. As they learn to read, read with them. Have them read to you, and as their love of reading grows, help provide access to great reading material for all your children. And finally, I want to thank the C T STEM Advisory Committee, Susan McNamara and Paul Steiner for all the work they do to provide cutting-edge educational opportunities for our students today and into the future. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As Mr. Lyons and Mrs. Rafford commented on our proposed strategic plan, again, I just want to reiterate for people to go online, read it, and comment. I think your comments are important. It is our playbook for the next four, five years, so that's what we're going to go by, so if there's no comments, then you can't complain. September is Hispanic Heritage Month. I was able to be at the Latino Festival at the Pavilion this past Saturday. Was it Saturday or Sunday? My weekends get so busy and then I get confused. But anyway, it was really well-attended, and I just loved the performances and all the dances and the costumes. It's always amazing to me. I remember the first time I saw performances from the Latino community in Falls Church City forever, when I was very, very young, and it always just amazes me. Among other things, September is also Self-improvement Month, and I thought we should take some time to think about how we as individuals, students, parents, community members, employees, employers, organizations, the district, our school board, and I think we should think about how we can really help uplift each other. Take some time to conduct research before you get out there and express thoughts, especially in writing. For steps to self-improvement is really, really, should be thoughtful. It shouldn't just be out there saying something when you don't even know if it's true or factual. And, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Seberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two mentions tonight. The first is academics. I just want to remind parents out there that the first-quarter interims are going to be released tomorrow, and it's a good time to reflect on your students' successes and also to get help where that's needed. The second thing is athletics and activities. There's some senior nights coming up for our fall sports, and we always ask for some support for our student athletes. The senior nights are a ceremonial way to acknowledge our seniors for their participation and their leadership, and also the parents for their support. Volleyball and field hockey are having senior nights on October 10th, and we have a school board meeting that night, so we can't be there. And then football chair and marching band have their senior night on October 27th. Last thing I wanted to mention is good luck. Shout-out to the Screaming Eagle Marching Band that has their first competition on Saturday.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kiefer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to start the night because my heart lies a little heavy with all of the people who are suffering due to hurricanes, so I just wanted to ensure that in the midst of all the craziness of the world, we keep in mind those who are really going through a very trying and catastrophic time in their lives, especially in Puerto Rico right now. So I just wanted to keep that top in the center of what's happening in the world. On a good news front, I too was able to attend some of the back-to-school nights. It was fabulous energy. You know, it's always nice, especially when I was up at Osborne, seeing smiling faces really trying to draw the kids into the clubs, and that was really, I saw some leaders up here that were there and smiling, so I appreciate that. I also wanted to commend our Osborne High School for the efforts related to disaster recovery. They did a fundraiser, I'm not quite sure what the final number was, but because they wanted, they saw a problem going on with the hurricanes, and they decided to take action and did a silent auction at the Osborne back-to-school night. So I just wanted to give kudos to those kids that especially took it and spearheaded that effort and raised what I believe was a pretty good amount of money. And I also just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Jordans in the audience. He is our president of the Manassas Education Association, and also held and has been trying to hold community events and really bring our staff some morale events, some time to get together, so I appreciate what you all are trying to do to keep the community engaged and our teachers and our staff. So thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Williams.
Thank you. I have a little bit, so.
Do you?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Thanks to Dr. Wallace and his street law class at Osborne, which I had the pleasure of speaking with on Friday. They were attentive, engaging, and inquisitive, talking to them about the law, the difference between civil law and criminal law and things of that nature. It was fun for me. I hope it was fun for them, I hope I didn't bore them, but it was great to do that, so thank her for inviting me. This Friday, September 29th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Baldwin Elementary is having the pizza night for dads and other males affiliated with Baldwin students for watchdogs, which is an innovative program being used by schools across America, which helps them to be positively impacted by the committed involvement of fathers and father figures in their students' life. The goal is to have participants spend at least one day this year at Baldwin to be a positive role model and to provide an extra set of eyes and ears. It's an excellent program that I participated in last year and will be in this year and highly recommended. Now, let's segue into current events. To start and echoing what Ms. Kiefer said, I know a number of people here, staff that Morales and I have at our practice with them in Puerto Rico, haven't reached them yet. They're very worried about their loved ones, so I'm praying for their safety and for the catastrophe that they're going through, and also a fellow American to deal with there in Texas and Florida and the Virgin Islands. It's easy for us to lose sight of that, but it's something very important that we should hopefully keep our eye on. Now, another note, I'm going to go dive into some more current events that some folks may think I shouldn't talk about, but talking to folks I think it's important and listening inside for yourself. I have an uncle Fred, my mother's brother, who served in Vietnam, and I respect his opinion. I asked him on Sunday on Facebook, because he's always on Facebook for some reason, and doesn't answer his cell phone, but he's always on Facebook. I asked him on Sunday as a veteran, what he thought about athletes taking the knee before the National Anthem and the President's comments. I told him that I support these players 100%, and he replied, while I would, this is a quote, "When I was in the jungles of Vietnam, some people who were talking the loudest now were turning deferments. When I was in the Army, many people protested the war in Vietnam. I never," and put that in caps, "never had a problem with the protesters. When you get to the point that you can't protest, this country is no better than Russia or North Korea. I have nephews, sons, grandsons, friends, and family. All of us are potential victims of an overzealous officer who feels endangered, or anyone else." In accordance with that, I saw another story yesterday about a 97-year-old white WWII veteran, John Millenius, who took a picture bending on one knee. Now, I'm 97, I can bend down on one knee, I don't know how he did it, but he was by himself. According to his grandson, his grandson said, "My grandpa is a 97-year-old WWII veteran, a Missouri farmer, who wanted to join with those who hashtag taken knee. The gentleman said, 'Those kids have every right to protest.'" And my son sent me a text last night coming from OHS grad, who said that his dad served in Vietnam, his brother served five years in the Marines, his sister served 13 years, and his brother-in-law still enlisted and fought in Afghanistan, and all of them are fine and supportive of the players taking the knee. So why am I talking about this? I'm talking about this because we're not in a bubble here in Manassas. I'm talking about this because judging by social media and conversations I've had the past few days, especially with the number of people, including many in our city and our school system, this is a thing, a thing causing division, which is eating away at the fabric of our American community, in my opinion. I've never served in the armed forces or as an officer, so I'm especially deferential to those who have on matters such as these. I know there are some people who have served and some who have not served, who object to athletes taking the knee during the anthem for various reasons, and that's fine. It's their pride, which I 100% totally respect. Disagreement is fine. That's America. However, the condemnation this weekend of athletes by the President and many others, I believe, is hypocritical, antithetical to the Constitution and the First Amendment, and will be blunt, steeped in racism. If we don't recognize and address this, we're going to continue developing to fragment this society. What is especially appalling to me is the contrast between the cursing act, booing act, and condemnation of athletes and the reaction of some people to events at the football stadium this weekend, contrasting that with events in Charlottesville last month, which is just 90 minutes from here. My family and I have deep roots in Charlottesville and were especially affected by the events there. My wife and I were in Charlottesville at UVA on August 11th, that Friday, when the marchers, white supremacists, led a march at UVA, which is our home, really. They shouted hateful slogans, carried torches, and attacked people who are part of the UVA family. Fortunately, we left before that happened because we were told that we shouldn't be in town that weekend. The following week, my wife, my daughter, and I were filmed for two days by Vice News on HBO, and they filmed us walking throughout Charlottesville and UVA while moving our daughter in to start her first year at UVA. Vice News wanted to obtain the perspective of an African-American family moving a student into UVA after such a tragic event. I can't believe I'm saying this in 2017, but my wife, my daughter, and I walked where the white supremacists and Nazis walked menacingly and attacked people in 2017 here in Virginia. We talked with people, watched their tears as we walked on the Charlottesville Mall and took them to the memorial where Heather Hyer was killed. We talked with parents, moving parents of students of color at UVA who were scared to death to leave their kids at UVA and had to reassure them that they'd be okay. We talked with lots of acquaintances and friends from a variety of backgrounds, different colors, races, socioeconomic, professors, students, all kinds of folks, who were and still are traumatized with what happened in Charlottesville. As you can imagine, this still is very emotional. Yet somehow on my Facebook feed and in real life, when I talk to some people, there seems to be far more outrage about people peacefully kneeling while abandoning a lot of football games than there is about awful, vitriolic people who caused a deep trauma which results in the death of three people. Something is wrong with this picture. I don't talk about it because it's not important, but I know a few NFL players from UVA because of my kids, my older kids from UVA, and I can tell you that none of them are sons of dogs. Some have families, and we have people who are not, who are allowed to talk, even though they're paid a high sum for their services. To a man, all of these players are fine young men who are always found to be respectful. If they are their teammates' meal, it is to bring attention to the highest reported number of negative encounters between law enforcement and African-American men. And I'm going to add, another issue of crime in African-American community, and that tragedy must be addressed and it's part of this issue. But these young men are thankful for and honor those who protect us, especially for me and many friends who are officers here in Manassas. I respect them and I really appreciate their service, but that doesn't mean they're not issues we need to address. You may not care, and I don't talk about this either, but I am frequently scared to death to drop anywhere by myself at day or night. As a young father, even when my youngest went to college, if I had to go to the grocery store, I would take one of my kids with me. Why? So we're not a peer threatening to people. I fear for my son when he drives from Wake Forest to Manassas, hoping he's not harmed by someone because of the color of his skin. Excuse me. This is my reality. Unless you walk in my shoes or those players' shoes, and according to our demographics here in Manassas, a great number of our students will walk in these shoes, or will walk in these shoes one day, don't tell people that protests are improper. These issues have an impact at a macro level in society, and they still open on a micro level to behaviors and perceptions in our schools and our community. Yesterday, New York Times had an article about the inequitable relationship of values in school discipline. The article notes that some studies suggest that race is a more powerful predictor of discipline than differential behavior, especially considering the unequal penalties assessed to black and white students for comparable infractions. So what does that mean for us? To me, who's an optimist, it means a few things. We need to learn to talk with each other and respectfully disagree, and emphasize respect, especially when someone with a broken viewpoint is peaceful or abandoning law. We need to get out of our echo chambers, we only seek out and listen to those we agree with. We want to be the best people we can be and the best educators for you all out here that we can be. We must listen to each other's stories. You may not agree, but please listen. We need to call out appalling and unfounded arguments and call things what they are. If something is racist, or sexist, or homophobic, we need to call it back and address it and stop pretending it's not. We need to step fastly and intentionally work towards equality and inclusion and break down walls and barriers. And finally, I can tell you, words matter. Proverbs says, "The words of the breakfast pierce like swords, but the tongue of the wise brings healing." I urge us all to recognize that in situations where societies devolve into chaos or horrible places, the devolution does not usually occur instantaneously. It occurs gradually, day by day and bit by bit. Today, I see an increasingly divided America, which is being torn apart, day by day, bit by bit. I can't imagine 2017 when I saw something my grandparents told me they saw, with people with torches marching through the great state of Virginia, shouting hateful things. It's still, it's a real thing. When I look around at home and I think of our staff and our kids, I know that here in Manassas, we have the skills, the tools, and the ability to help maintain America's greatness, but we must do it together with honesty, understanding, purpose, intentionality, and respect. Failure is not an option. Sorry for the long message.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Albrecht. And people say I'm tough to follow. I know. Mr. Williams, thank you. Those were very powerful, well-intentioned, correct words that we should abide by. And I was thinking of a couple of stories as analogies as you went through, but I think letting your speech, letting your word stand is appropriate. Going more on to the topic of what we were doing last Saturday, Mrs. Williams, myself, Mr. Elston, Mr. Lovejoy, the mayor, city manager, the superintendent, and a couple of the members of staff toured quite a bit of the city, and this is going to start coming out as we go through the community dialogue process. We started with the police station. We spent quite a bit of time over Dean to include the Boys and Girls Club. Went over and looked at Weems, and you're probably asking, well, you know, it was a pretty day, why were we just out walking all over the city with nothing else better to do for a couple of hours? And the reality is, we know in our long-range C I P, we have a need to replace Dean, and there's a lot of land over there. We've got to make sure we use it well, and the city needs to make sure we use it well. And one of the things that this school board and the current city council want to do is work together, which is exactly what Mr. Williams was just talking about. We have to work together to get this done. So we're going to work, seeking the input of the community to say, what do you want from your parks? What do you want from your schools? How will that look? And we'll try to figure out what the right comprehensive plan is. The city's also putting a new public works building, so one of the options is to deed over the current police station for a central office for our staff. How would we integrate that into the back-up to Osborne? And then, what can we do as a community to use all of our public buildings, all of our schools, to really engage the youth, whether it's in the summertime, weekends, after-hours, whatever that might be? And how do we do it in a way that makes sense? So we're beginning those dialogues. That's part of that strategic plan that's been referenced. It's going to be going on for quite some time. It's not going to be done tomorrow, but those are the kind of things this board and your council are working on. The other guy, Mrs. Seberg, didn't talk about it. I'm here going Thursday, I'm going. V S B A is putting on a legislative session, and for the first time ever, the Virginia School Board Association is going to have both the Republican and the Democratic gubernatorial nominees come talk to us about their positions on education. So it should be interesting. I'm glad we've got members of this board going. That's all. Thank you, sir. I'm glad you, Mrs. Seberg. We appreciate that very much. Well, I'm not going to talk long. Last night, the city council approved the naming of Tudor Lane to Eagle Lane, so we're thankful for that, and I'm not sure what the procedure is now, other than the city council did approve that. Tomorrow, we've got a committee meeting for Osborne's basketball court. We're going to rename it, or name it, Berry-Suddeth Court, and we will be meeting tomorrow to go over some of the details on that and how we're going to want to do that, and luckily for us, Francine Suddeth, Berry's wife, will be there and have her input, so that's critically important, and she's coming down from Pennsylvania to do that. And that's all I've got. We'll move on to citizens' comments. At this time, we welcome citizens who wish to speak about the services, policies, and affairs of the city of Manassas Public Schools. Because we have an agenda that we need to complete, we ask that comments be limited to three minutes. Got that, Rodney? We appreciate the time you're taking to be here. We treat citizens' comments as a public hearing, and we do not engage in conversation with speakers. The lack of an immediate response to your comments should not be taken as a lack of interest or concern. Please be respectful when presenting your comments. I've got one gentleman signed up, Mr. Rodney Jordan, the president of our Manassas Education Association.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, School Board, Dr. McGurk, to all of you here. My name is Rodney Jordan. I'm here representing the Manassas Education Association, and I just wanted to thank Dr. McGurk for attending our meet and greet, and also Ms. Seberg, Ms. Kiefer, Ms. Williams, and Mr. O'Hanlon. We look forward to working with you all in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney. Three minutes. Three minutes, that's one. I knew you had it in you. I don't have anyone else signed up. Does anyone else like to speak? Doesn't matter, anyone done. Okay, thank you all. Thank you, Rodney. We appreciate you being here. Consent agenda, can I get a motion?
Mr. Chairman, please, the School Board and City of Manassas adopt the consent agenda as modified.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams, that the School Board, the City of Manassas approve the consent agenda as modified. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Carries seven zero. We'll move on to discussion agenda. Old business, school board compensation. Mr. Hawkins.
Good evening. During our August 22nd meeting, the School Board had initial discussions regarding a change in school board member and the school board chairman compensation. During the meeting, we shared the Code of Virginia, which outlines the process and when the change could likely take effect. when the change could legally take effect. And we presented a listing of the school board's compensation and severity jurisdictions. It's important to note that any changes in school board compensation would not take effect until January 2019, after an election of one school board member this November, and I believe it's three school board members in November 2018. So, that's all I have.
The, just for the general public, and again, the thousands watching on TV, I have pushed this forward because I believe that this school board and the future school boards are not justly compensated. Mr. Albrecht just went through, they're going to Richmond coming up, meetings tomorrow, meetings Thursday, meeting Saturday. This is a very stressful and important job. There has not been a pay increase for this school board for approximately 10 years. Given other jurisdictions in Northern Virginia, I think this board is grossly underpaid. Considering the salaries that the city council and the mayor get, I believe this school board is grossly underpaid. The reason I have brought it up now is that this would not take effect until January of My term, Mr. Williams' term, and unless somebody beats him into writing, Mr. O'Hanlon's term will be up in January of 2019. The reason I'm bringing it up is because I have not made a decision whether I'm going to run for reelection. The citizens have not made a decision whether they're going to reelect me if I do decide to run. And so now I thought would be the best time to bring this up because it is not compensation for myself. This board puts in too much time, too much effort, not to be compensated justly. And that was my reason for bringing this up. Is there any other discussion? Any of us would like to speak to this?
Well, at some point, this has to move to the action agenda. In various forms, I think every member of the board's expressed their support, their issues, their concerns, their thoughts on many sides, both on the direct dollar compensation as well as that associated with maybe other things such as benefits, so.
Well, and...
Your facts, as you presented them, are correct, and I'd like it to focus on the merits of this job and not a comparative analysis that just because somebody else does something, we should get it, because that's, we talk to our kids, we say that's not the right way to do it either.
Right. But the amount of time put in here does merit it, and I also want to make it clear that we have discussed this at three or four other meetings that were at city, at central office, and we did not want to take any action. We did not want, we wanted to make sure that we had at least two meetings on camera to make sure that this is full disclosure, I hate the word transparency, but full disclosure of why we're doing this or why we're not doing this. We have not made a decision. The conversation has gone back and forth, whether we are in favor of this or not in favor of this. I am in favor of it. I don't have a number in mind. Others did, but I just feel that future boards, and again, this wouldn't start until January of 2019, deserve to be compensated more than they are now. Anyone else have any thoughts on it?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Well, we will bring this up again. It'll be under an action item in two weeks. If someone would like to make a motion, we can do that at that time, and if it passes, it passes. If it doesn't, it doesn't. And we can have further discussion at that time as well. Okay. That didn't take as long as I thought it might. Good. Student achievement, Jenny Dean Elementary School. Dr. Jones.
Did I mean Dr. DeMary? Dr. DeMary.
Yeah, boy. I tell you what.
Chair of the Mary and school board members. So you know it's in your future now.
Yeah. It better be honorary.
I'm here tonight to talk about Jenny Dean Elementary School. Our vision at Jenny Dean Elementary School is, students will use creativity, collaboration, communication, and critical thinking skills to be successful learners, demonstrating safe, responsible, and respectful behavior as productive citizens. During the course of last year, we were happy to see parent and student involvement increase for the school year. At our STEAM night in March of 2017, we had over 500 parents and students, and that grew from just about 100 the previous year. Parents attended award ceremonies at the end of the year, celebrations with great numbers. This summer, we had several teachers volunteer to go to Georgetown South to read to the students in the summer on Wednesdays, and that was a great success. We had between eight and 15 students in every session, and we also gave the students books to take home to read over the summer. Students are excited about their robotics in our class, in our school. We received a grant from the Education Foundation and also a grant from Rose, and we were able to buy a 3D printer. We have some Little Bit and Mini Engineering games, and the students are really using those. And the PTA is sponsoring activities to support our parent engagement. When we look at our pass rate by subjects, we had an increase in history of three points, and our reading and math scores decreased. We've been analyzing these numbers, and I will discuss some more in the upcoming slides. Reading pass rate by subgroups. Several reporting groups include English learners, students with disabilities, and whites increased their pass rates. Teachers and staff have met and decided to focus on guided reading, word study, and vocabulary development, and to increase the writing process as part of balance industry. Each grade level has identified areas to work on. In kindergarten, the teachers want to make sure that all students are at a DRA level of four before leaving kindergarten. In grade one, we will work on retelling skills. Grades two through four have decided that they want to work on and concentrate on retelling and summarizing. The third and fourth grade teachers have also identified weak areas that we know we need to work on more during the school year. Those are drawing conclusions, author's purpose, vocabulary, text features on nonfiction material, inferences, and predictions. These skills will be scaffold throughout the year and will be part of reading centers, dolphin block, whole group instruction, and our core instruction in all areas. Math pass rate by subgroups. White students had an increase in the math pass rate. Teachers have been discussing possible causes for our drops in all of our reporting groups. They have been reviewing data, student data by questions over the summer, and we are still previewing and looking at this data in our PLCs. We will continue to discuss this throughout the year, and we will look at this after each assessment. In math, teachers and coaches have decided that we need to consistently use data to guide our instruction. We need to create flexible groups for mediation and enrichment. We need to build fluency facts. We need to focus on the areas indicated as weakness when we look at our student data by questions. We will continually practice TEI problems. We will incorporate single and multi-step problems on a consistent basis. We will use number talks to increase number sense and flexibility with numbers, and we'll provide a for and after-school tutoring in the winter and in the spring. Pass rate by SRL test. For grade four reading, we had a five-point increase, and this is significant. Most of the time, a five-point up or down is significant, and we were happy to have a five-point increase in grade four reading. And Virginia Studies had a three-point increase. We will continue, as I said, to review data and to create flexible groups to reteach and to raise our scores. We have several improvement plans for the upcoming year, and we are aligning our improvement goals with those of the superintendent. For student achievement, we want students to meet or exceed Powell's benchmarks, pre-K that would be 75%, and kindergarten 80%. And we also want 75% or more of our students in the third and fourth grade to pass SRLs with a score of 400 or above. For student services, we want to increase our attendance rate to 96%. And then we also want counselors to hold at least two individual and/or small group support sessions for students with repeat discipline referrals. We want to stop those kids who are repeat offenders, and we want to give them the tools to work with so that they can focus on their schoolwork. For human resources, we want to increase the retention rate of our teachers. We know that when teachers have experience working in a grade level, they learn the curriculum, and they learn multiple strategies to work with the students that we have. So we want to keep our teachers and not have to constantly be reteaching our teachers. We also want to increase opportunity for teachers to feel comfortable with giving the voice and concerns up to 80%, and that's something that we, when we looked at our engagement survey, that was something that we want to work on also. And for communication, we want all teachers to communicate with parents at least four times a year, and that can be done in a multiple ways, and they will use, they will document this with a communication log, and this may be face-to-face meetings, emails, phone calls, in-class dojo. And we want them to discuss both academic and behavioral processes, and I'll ask all teachers now to make sure they notify or contact parents before parent-teacher conferences with a positive phone call. And for our, let's see where I am? And for our communication, as I said, the parents communicating, and also we want to achieve an average parent satisfaction score of 80% for communication. So we want to make sure that we're communicating with our parents on a regular basis, and we want them to be satisfied. So we'll be using newsletters that we send home with our students once a month. We'll be using our teacher webpages, the school webpage, Alert Now flyers, and phone calls to make sure that parents are informed and they know what's going on in the school. When we look at response to intervention, you can see for our math, tier-two pass rate was 16%, and tier-three pass rate was 11%. And for reading, tier-two pass rate was 0%, and tier-three pass rate 32%. This year, when we look at RTI, we will have our PCG instructors who work with our tier-three students. Teachers will provide intervention to tier-two students during dolphin block, and we'll make sure we monitor this closely this school year. RTI meetings will be held every four weeks to monitor student achievement and to determine student success. And RTI testing has been taking place this whole month of September, and instruction will begin next week, the fourth week, in October. And this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, ma'am. Are there any questions or comments?
Ma'am.
Hello, Dr. Jones. On Slide 7, you were talking about communication and that you had to communicate four times with the parents per year. What was it before, and what does the communication, like, define communication? That's not a newsletter going home. That's like...
Then that's actual, that's what I actually want a parent to see, I mean, I want teachers to see a parent face-to-face, and that could be parent-teacher conferences. It could be making phone calls, but I actually want them to actually talk to them, and you know, so they can talk about the student's progress, you know, how we can help them at home. And even if, you know, like, we're planning like an academic night this year, we'll have a STEAM night, but like, for example, even at academic night, they can call the parents and invite them when you come. And at those nights, we plan to give them some tools on how you can help your child at home. So we want those to be actually talking to, face-to-face or on the phone, and just talking about the students and what we can do to help them.
I think that's great. Thank you.
Mr. Albrecht.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Dr. Jones, thank you. And it's, thank you for volunteering to be first, if in fact you volunteered amongst your peers, because it can't be easy. And especially with the message you had to come to us today, with test scores declining in two of three subject areas. And I got to say what I find probably most alarming, and I probably will see this trend across many, that Mr. O'Hanlon talked about reading. Mr. Williams talked about education and the gateway, and yet, our reading scores, while they only went down two points, our black students, our Hispanic or our brown students, our children who come from economically disadvantaged, we failed them significantly because that, they contributed 100% to that point drop. And as a division, as Mr. Williams pointed out, that's who we are. So we have to figure out what we need to do, because if we're going to make this the greatest generation the next time, and make America great again, all those other great political slogans, we have to lift up the children coming out of poverty, because it is clearly the best path out. So.
And that's why reading will be our focal point for the year. We will also, as I said, be trying to go in the community more and to put books in their hands so they can read at home.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Okay, thank you.
Hayden Elementary, Dr. Wilder.
Pull it up from there. Yeah, I know. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Chairman DeMary, members of the board. Thank you for having me. I like this new setup. This is very nice. All right, so a little bit about Hayden. At Hayden, we definitely focus on family-friendly events. We have events such as the Ice Cream Social. We had that just last week at Stonewall Park, which we had great turnout. We have our Fall Family Festival, Breakfast with Santa, All-Day Field Day, and Evening Carnival, and we welcome our families in for lunch every day. By building this family connection, we believe this is how we're going to help support our students and have a bigger impact on them and their learning. We do continue to focus on developing children into bilingual, bilingual, and bicultural students who are prepared for the international community. We had 98% of our kindergarten students move into the first-grade dual-language program from our kindergarten classes. We also had more than half of our teachers volunteer to begin training for project-based learning with the Buck Institute. This was far more than we had planned. However, our teachers were so excited to learn new strategies to help support our students. And finally, a new initiative we're beginning this year is a volunteer service model, where not only do we ask our parents to volunteer, but we're also asking our students to serve by volunteering in the community for an hour each semester. That can be the community or the school. They can come help at school events. And we believe that service and supporting others is integral. So then, pass rates by subject. We have made slow and steady growth in reading. Strengths in those areas are story elements, drawing conclusions, text features, word analysis skills, and author's purpose. It's evident that our work with vocabulary the past five years is helping us make some gains. We did make slow and steady growth in math over the past four years, but we did drop in 2016. Hayden teachers took charge to analyze that data to avoid any future drops. They identified issues with solving multi-step problems and math fluency as the primary areas of weakness, and I'll talk more about that in later slides. They did also sign up for additional training with Origo on their own time, after-school hours, to support our students, and they've also worked with our math coach for ideas to support them as we implement new SRLs this year. Overall, our reading performance showed improvement in most of our reporting areas, especially with second language learners and Hispanic students. We did make gains of nine and five points respectively. However, we are concerned with the progress of every student. They did well overall. Students did well with lower-level questions about story elements, drawing conclusions, text features, word analysis skills, and author's purpose. However, we scored lower on the areas of medium and high-level difficulty questions, and we want to increase the level of higher-order thinking skills. So our teachers and coaches will work together to include question stems and assessment prompts, especially in the areas of nonfiction. That's always a big challenge area. We want our students to think critically about the text through closed reading passages and practice, and using evidence from the text to support their answers. An additional area of focus this year is to increase our motivation and engagement with text through the Redskins Reads Program. As is evidenced by TV all of the time, the NFL is a powerful forum, and we believe it's an incredibly effective way to help support our students by understanding the importance of reading. So each month, our students will work to complete activities to improve their reading skills, and they're going to work towards incentives with Redskins player visits, Redskins accessories and prizes, and we're hoping for a grand prize to Redskins Park. weaknesses. We do have a plan to turn this around. Our students did well with answering lower-level and mid-level questions that involve fractions, place-value structures, and algebraic properties. They struggled with answering mid-to-high-level questions and solving multi-step problems, and they did struggle with math fluency. As they continue to use number talks in their classrooms, their confidence and flexibility of number and number sense in mathematics will continue to increase. And based on our data, our teachers selected OREGO math materials to address fluency and improve computational strategies. Our math coach will also continue to work with our teachers to address improving student understanding with higher-level thinking and questioning skills. So although we struggled in grade three last year, our fourth-grade members show positive cohort growth. In fifteen, sixteen, third-grade scores improved from sixty-eight to seventy-eight in reading and sixty-five to seventy-eight in math. So our fourth-grade teachers have a lot of good things in place and we're gonna continue to support them with that and, of course, bring that down to support our third-grade teachers as well. The teachers have been so positive, they have, they feel empowered by the plan of action that they've put into place, and they are confident they're going to see significant improvement this year in all academic areas, based on their data analysis and their plan of specific support for students throughout the entire school day. So our findings are listed here. I already addressed our cohort growth in reading and math for grade students. Hayden strengths also lie in our small-group reading support. Teachers are very effective to appropriately group students and support them with their reading skills throughout the day in small group. We've also had several teachers step up. We've had a lot more teacher leaders, which has been really exciting to see, kind of like mama bear, you know, you want your little ones to kind of grow and, and take over one day, that's always the plan. And they've really stepped up, it's been very exciting. So taking charge of PBIS, the Project-Based Learning Initiative, after-school tutoring, and then, of course, our Redskins Reading Incentive. Our grade-level teams are strong and cohesive, they all work together every day in a positive, productive manner. They've been planning together very effectively. And we've also made great strides with our second language learners, and we want to continue that growth for all of our students. Obviously, math is a major target area for improvement. We want to support all students in all reporting groups by providing the direct instruction and materials they need in order to develop their math skills. Excuse me. Our teachers want to create flex groupings, flexible groupings, where amongst the grade level, they share the students to be able to best provide support. They want to be able to target and personalize instruction for all of our students. And finally, we want to support our teachers and students with targeted PBIS support and intervention. You can't learn if, if you're not there and engaged in supporting the, as a student in the classroom. So our school improvement goals are listed here, developed by the Hayden Leadership Team. All four categories support student achievement by focusing on instruction, providing a safe environment, communicating effectively, and supporting our staff. Under student achievement, we expect an overall pass rate of seventy-eight percent or better in reading and math, and eighty-six percent or better in Virginia Studies. In addition, we'll increase our reporting group scores in both reading and math by at least ten percent. In student services, we'll reduce the number of repeat referrals by at least fifteen percent and maintain ninety-five percent or better attendance rates. In human resources, based on the engagement survey, we want eighty-five percent of staff to feel engaged, and we also want them to feel a part of the decision-making process. We want to continue building that teacher leadership. In addition, we'll maintain our ninety percent or better teacher retention rates in the coming years. Finally, we want to effectively communicate with our families, so we will increase messages sent out by at least ten percent, using Class Dojo to send out alerts and messages, as well as the Remind app, which allows me to text families in both English and Spanish. It's really cool, we like this a lot. A lot of parents have been very complimentary already on the alert messages that they've been receiving, including messages such as the buses are running ten minutes late, or just different ways to, to let them know of, of things that are coming up. So currently, in Class Dojo, we have three-hundred-and-thirty-four families connected. In the English Remind app, we have one-hundred-and-ten signed up for, to receive the text message alerts, and fifty-seven Spanish-speaking alerts. We also will send out a parent survey in June in order to determine if at least eighty percent of families are satisfied with our communication efforts. To support reading intervention, teachers requested keeping the tier-three students and providing that intervention to them during the extended block of instruction. We felt very strongly that they know and recognize where the students are, where they're performing, and they believe they're the best person to support them. They are being trained to use the LLI, the Level Literacy Intervention Kits, and our reading coach will be modeling lessons to support students and teachers. In math, teachers in grades three and four selected the OREGO RTI program to implement in their class during math extension time. This program is module-based and provides teacher resources to differentiate instruction based on individual student need. The RTI program works in tandem with the OREGO Big Box of Math Facts that's currently being used by classroom teachers to build that math fluency in grades one through four, and the OREGO Stepping Stones Textbook Program that's being piloted by our entire fourth grade and two of our third-grade classes. Teachers will assess weekly and meet monthly with their grade levels to discuss student needs and develop additional support plans. We are confident that student performance will increase substantially for all students this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilder. Questions, comments?
Yes, sir. Everyone's had difficult messages, right? But I'm gonna take a little bit of offense and I'll put a parent hat on. We haven't had slow and steady growth. We had lower test scores in all three areas in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, than we did in fourteen, fifteen. We talk about a growth model is what we want to get to, and we're not growing the kids. So it's just, we've gotta stay focused and that's where it's gotta go. The communication stuff you talked about does intrigue me. Hopefully Ms. Radford and staff are also kind of collectively across the elementary level, all the buildings are working that. To have a goal of increasing ten percent communication, it's quality, not quantity. Absolutely, I mean, I don't need any more catalogs delivered. So we've gotta think about how we're doing that and what we're doing. The idea of getting a memo that the buses are running late, that's probably really good. I mean, there are parents who sit home waiting for those, especially in those cold, nasty, rainy days, so that level of engagement I think is neat, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Wilder. Round Elementary, Mr. Baldwin.
Good evening Chairman Demary, Dr. McGurk, members of the board. I am proud and honored to be standing up here representing not only our students and teachers and parents, but our community at large. I'm joined by my awesome AP, Mrs. Robinson, and I actually had to force my coaches not to come because they've been working tirelessly, and they said, "We're gonna be there." So don't come, go home and get some rest, there's nasty bugs going around. So we kind of took on this year a little bit of a twist, kind of like a yearly theme for us, of a proud past and bright future, because we wanted to stick with a lot of the things, a lot of the things that we've been doing, but we need to keep moving forward, be innovative as, as we're moving forward and as our students' needs change, we need to kind of change the way that we're approaching our teaching. Our vision, I highlight just a couple of words, you know, we're striving for excellence. We know the importance of having a partnership with the parents and community, empowering our kids and all children. And we're gonna, you're gonna probably hear me say "all kids." We recognize the fact that there are reporting groups, but we're gonna be focusing on all students at all times. It's hard to share our story with the limited amount of time. To me, if you're passionate about something, you can talk forever about it, so I could probably sit up here and, and talk for a very long time, but I'm not allowed to do that. So we have about six-hundred-and-forty kids, we do house three classes that instruct our students with intellectual disabilities, a number of ESAL teachers and counselors who are equally as important as, as we consider everybody in our school, a teacher, custodians, cafeteria workers, whoever it might be. We, we all affect our kids every single day. So I'm gonna highlight just a couple of things up there. We're really focused this year, the beginning of the year, on the why, why we're doing what we're doing. It stemmed off some of our preschool activities, and so we brought it back to the school level. And as we talked about that, we, we made like a Wordle, have you ever seen Wordle? So we gathered all the, all the different words that all the staff members did individually, and we made a Wordle, and then we spread that out and gave one of those to every, every classroom, so they put it on their doors, they put it in their classroom to kind of remember on a day-to-day basis what makes Round a special place to not only learn as students, but also work and, and as teachers, to be there every day. We're truly a family there. It's, it's, you know, every year I come back, it's, it seems like a stronger and stronger family, which is, I think, why we're, why we're successful. We do have solid instructional practices and support systems, it's not one person's child, it's all of ours. So if a child fails, it's not that teacher, it's all of us, because we need to focus on every individual child for what they are, where they can go, and, and focus on the growth. And then, part of that is using our, using our staff wisely. Last year in January, we did an in-house PD where I invited some of our teachers and coaches and kind of found that niche for them and asked them to lead some PD in-house. And so people can kind of pick and choose where they went, and they took it from them, make and take math centers, some of those things that teachers identified, there were some things that were important for them and for their kids. Very successful, got great feedback from the teachers. And then lastly, community engagement, you know, we hear, I always challenge people when they say, "We want parents to be involved." You know, being involved, to me, means coming to events, you know, coming to movie night, we have movie night coming up on Friday showing in Moana. That's being involved and going to school. We are, we want our parents to be engaged, we want them to be, have the tools to be successful when the kid goes home, that they can help them at home. So we do that, I have monthly PAVE meetings, Parents of Rightful Education was more of an open forum, I can kind of just talk with parents. We last year did PEP, and this year we're ramping it up due to some help from Mrs. Moore and some of our other ESAL teachers throughout the division. Personally, we went around and knocked on every single hundred-and-something kindergarten doors this summer, kind of welcoming in, into the Round family, and I appreciated the help of my counselors and my interpreter who came with me and do that, but it was, it was really cool. So we got invited into many houses, which had some great aromas, aromas around the evening time for dinner, but it was, it was really neat. And we actually had a kid follow us around Georgetown South yelling, say, "He wants a bag of chips and he wants more," it was, it was really cool to see them, see them out there. So we're looking to really keep our community engaged and going to them, as well as inviting them to come to us. So pass rate by subject, again, kind of like with some of my predecessors that were just up here, a five-point drop, we do recognize as being a significant drop, and one that is very important to us, that we look closely at why that drop happened. We are proud of our accomplishments. We, very early on, I called some of my leadership team members, Mrs. Robinson, the coaches and I, and we sat down, just a couple of us, and kind of hammered out some tough conversations about what happened, what are we gonna do? And then we kind of spread that out. Up to this point, I think we've probably had in some capacity or another at least five or six school improvement team meetings, whether it be committee-focused on certain goal areas or as a whole staff with parent involvement. So we're really digging deep and really continuing our high expectations for our So in our reading, in our reading reporting groups, again, like I said before, we're, first and foremost, we're interested in all students. We do recognize, again, that we have some challenges in some of our reporting groups. For example, our Hispanic reporting group, that dropped seven points. That's unacceptable to us. So we need to figure out what we're gonna do differently, you know, not doing the same thing over and over again, what are we gonna do differently that's going to help all of our kids be successful? So at the beginning of the year, we actually took some of our, excuse me, some of our data and, that we had from incoming students, on grade level, above grade level, below grade level, and we compared that to our end result. And I'm happy to say that, you know, for overall, for each of our grades, our, for example, our, on grade level and above grade level may have been seventy percent, but our pass rate was seventy-eight. So that shows to us, we're trying to find some areas of growth, trying to celebrate those areas while at the same time circling back and, and asking that question, why? And then from our discussions with teachers, we have to do, be strategic about our answering of, asking of questions and answering of questions. My other fellow principals mentioned students be able to answer those low-level questions all the time. And if we ask those low-level questions of our kids throughout the day, they're gonna be fine in the SOLs when it comes to that. But if we challenge our kid and ask more why and how does this relate to things, then they're gonna be able to answer those questions when it comes to the end-of-year test, or throughout the year as we check, do our quick checks in unit tests. You know, we really focused on guided reading two years ago, and we're continuing to strengthen those components there too. And then, of course, our vocabulary instruction, how is that being developed? We look at our Hispanic students and our English learners, and we need to do some improvements there. In math, we do have some solid instruction, instructional practices in math. You know, I think some of that does come with the, with the experience of the staff at my building, which I'm very proud of. Our black students did excel, as you can see, and there's been a continual rise in the past couple of years. We want that same thing for all of our kids. We, myself and staff, all expect that growth rate that you see in that one reporting group to be the same for all of our reporting groups. And then, again, from some discussion with teachers, some of the things that we really think are important when it comes to some discussions of math instruction, are making sure we have visuals for our students, especially for the second language learners thrive from visual, but they also thrive from conversation with other kids. And there is, previous to coming on to Manassas City, I did a project at my previous place of employment and did some research on that, and those visuals and having that talk time are really important when it comes to math instruction for our second language learners. And then we, we do, I feel like we do a good job with our writing. We always are striving to improve in our writing, but writing across the content areas is, is really important, because we don't write just to write, we're usually writing about something, and it's not always about writing. Writing about math, or writing about social studies, or writing about current events, and stuff that we expect them to do when they get older. So as you can see, this is my proud slide. We are above the state averages in all areas that you see up there, but we're not satisfied with that. While we celebrate this, we know that we have growth to, to still have. We need to continue to target, specific targets for our kids' needs, and look at our Rockies-Rangers remediation program, which we had great success with the last two years, and how we can continue to build that program so that all of our students are, are successful across the board. Areas of strength, some of the areas up there, we're proud of the state of our pass advancement rates in third-grade reading and Virginia Studies, rose, they didn't, they didn't rise by that many percentage points, but that's what they are at, those final numbers, they each rose by four to seven percent, I believe. So we're proud of those. Our student leadership opportunities, we have a, we just had our SEA elections last week, and it was the whole democratic process, we had kids on, on broadcast, giving their speeches, posters around the building, it was really neat to see. And so they got to practice for public speaking, I just, I had one student who, as we were walking out, the student who did not win the election, but another student who was a patrol, just without anybody asking him, said, "Great job, you did a really good job, it's okay that you didn't win, it's, you did really well." And then that's the kind of stuff we want to instill in our kids, some of those soft skills. And then our patrols, we have a job application that they have to go through in the spring, they have to have recommendations, then they have to shadow the current patrols, so our fourth graders are patrols. So in third grade, at the end of the year, they're shadowing, they're applying for a job, they're shadowing the job, and then they come in, and day one, and then they come in in August, have a pizza lunch and get sworn in, and then day one, we have patrols. And it's, it's, it's very helpful to have that stuff from day one. So I'm really proud of some of the opportunities that our students have in terms of leadership. And the shared decision-making, we've developed committees, this is now going into our second year, so that all teachers are at some vertical alignment of each of our math, literacy, technology, leadership, and culture and climate. So we have representation from everybody, so everybody's voice is heard. In terms of improvement, I think a lot of us are gonna echo kind of the same things in terms of higher-order thinking practices, I alluded to the question earlier. In math, while we did do well, those word problems and those multi-step problems have, have come about from our conversations with teachers and looking at the data. Balanced literacy instruction, which includes word study, guided reading, shared reading, read aloud, and writing, is something that we need to continue to, to look at and be critical of for the sake of our, for the sake of our students. Some of those, drawing conclusions made idea, we keep building on those every year and getting more complex, we need to continue looking at that really closely. And then writing across the curriculum, what, you know, what our purpose is. Kind of in, looking at that, we need to challenge ourselves as educators to, to really focus in on these areas across different content areas. So in terms of our improvement goals, we, in student achievement, we're looking to go back to a couple of years ago, and... And then writing across the curriculum, you know, what are our purposes? Kind of in, looking at that, we need to challenge ourselves as educators to really focus in on these areas across different content areas. So in terms of our improvement goals, we, in student achievement, we're looking to go back to a couple of years ago and where we were. And we've made gains before, and so we're looking to make big gains again this year. And we are all confident that we can do it. We've made, formed some great relationships with the parents now because we have, we had a bunch of new families and invited them in, engaged them in conversations about how they can help. And so we're looking forward to strengthening those partnerships with our families. Student services, we have a great PBIS Culture and Climate Committee that really works to stress the positive nature of Round. And so we have little red tickets that we give out, and actually, we now had a bus driver meeting and now the bus drivers are giving them out to, you know, increase that positive relationship with even bus drivers because everybody can give out those positive reinforcers. We have reflection forums that I brought on when I came in that we want to engage, we don't want to punish kids for choices all the time, you know, of course, there's some, but we want our kids to be reflective. We want to provide them with opportunities to talk with a supportive professional adult at school while involving the parents so that we can make sure that it doesn't happen again. And we've been really successful because that increases our communication with parents as well. It's the old-school triplicate form, but it's been very successful in terms of looking at our data. Human resources, you know, we have really good retention, which to me, it just kind of, again, goes back and look at our family atmosphere at Round. We have a focus on growing, growing as professionals for the changing needs of our students. We have book clubs set up. We're looking at doing some collegial walkthroughs because we, you know, we get so engulfed in our own classrooms sometimes that we need to find some opportunities, get out. I've offered to cover classes for however long so that they can go out and be with their colleagues, whether on their grade level, above or below. I would encourage a different building if they hear something going on. We're all team here. And I know I speak for the other principals that we will continue to work together so that we can all have across-the-board achievement for all students. And then those next two, 75% of staff feel as they are supportive in addressing problems or issues, and then 90% of employees will feel that they're engaged in their work and it's coming directly from our engagement survey and looking for growth in those areas as well. In terms of communication, you know, we always try to find that balance between too much and too little and then right in the middle and how, who likes what kind of communication the best. So that's something that we always have to balance as administration within the buildings. But, you know, we use a lot of the PAVE and PEP time to really talk with our parents. And we've had some great partnerships already. We have our first Lego League, we have a couple, two doctorates, doctors who are coming and talking with our Lego League on Thursday that are coming all the way from DC just to talk with them about their Lego League and the problem that they have been presented with through their Lego League. And then we're partnering with Watershed in fourth grade and a project-based learning assignment. And even the Brickyard right down the road, they're coming in, talking about soil and they were so excited, we reached out to them, I could throw a brick crackling and hit their building. And we need to reach out to our community members and our businesses that can help support learning. So in response to intervention, you know, our program really thrives on the right people. I can't stress enough how the team that we have, our RTI team, that includes not only coaches and admin, but our teachers, ESAL teacher specialized, everybody's well aware of our processes. So most of our students obviously being in that tier one, tier two, our teachers are going to provide them that instruction. That's 30 minutes, two, three times a week on top of normal everyday tier one instruction. And then our tier three students will continue to be pulled out by our PCG instructors with support from our coaches. Again, we meet very regularly, face-to-face, and monitor growth and multiple, using multiple data points so we get a good picture of the whole child. And of course, we do our progress monitoring, just as everyone else does, but we really use that data as well to make some informed decisions. And again, the instructional communication framework that we have in place is really, really strong, I feel. So with our data at the top, we're very proud of that. Again, that tier two comes mostly from our instructional, our core instructional practices in the classroom because that's where those tier two students were serviced. But again, it took a team effort for all that to come about. So again, I could keep going, but I'll stop.
Oh, you can.
I know I can.
Any comments or questions?
I gotta be.
Ms. Kiefer? So this is actually, I was sort of waiting for my comments after seeing all three and just trying to figure out what to say. So this is tough stuff. I think that all of you should feel proud of everything you've done, your staff, everybody in this division. We know how hard this is and how hard you work and how many different variables result in the numbers. What I do applaud, among the gazillion things that we applaud up here of all of you, is a couple of things that I felt like you all echoed, and I would just stress that it's imperative to continue. I think, Scott, you said, "Parents as partners." I think we sometimes kind of do this, and I'm a parent here and I'm a, you know, it's the teacher didn't communicate with me and I didn't, you know, and then the teacher's saying, "Well, the parent never shows up." I like the idea of the partnership because that's exactly what it is. In addition to the communities, I've seen a lot of what has been done in terms of community connections. I've seen a PAVE, you know, conversation, and it's really powerful to meet people where they're at. And the other thing, I mean, I could go on all night too, but I won't because you all need to go home to your families, but is really about facing the tough facts. If we don't face those and if we don't face them together, so I just want to put that caveat on, I know you all get together. And what I noticed when I looked at the reporting groups, and we all are in agreement, you look at all children, all 7,000-plus are all of our kids, right? We all are invested in every single one of their success. But it's, you looked at some of those reporting groups in one school. You did well with the black reporting group, whereas the others seemed to struggle. And some did well with the students with disabilities, who I worry about a lot too. And just continue those conversations and really keep digging because there's something there that's working, you know? And so I really applaud that you all are working together and encourage you to continue to do that. You have our support. We know these are hard stories to come up here and tell, but there is a lot of pride up here and we know that there's a lot of commitment to get it even better in the next year. So hang on to that hope and know that we all want to see better, but we know there's a lot that goes into this. And so that's just my personal message. So thank you.
Mr. Hallen?
Mr. Chairman, thank you, Scott, for coming to talk to us. And kind of echoing what Kristen said, it's great to hear about the collaboration that goes on within each school. And I know you as principals get together, but what I would like to see is, you know, where one school is doing better in math and one doing better in English, all the teachers from that cohort sit together and talk about best practices. You know, why is Round doing so well in math compared to other schools? You know, what is the secret there or whatever? And like Kristen said, it's different in each school. Each school has a different area or a different group that they're better in, but there must be some secrets. And I'm sure it's not just, you know, one outstanding teacher. There are some practices that the teacher puts into play day in and day out that they could share. And I know there's several half-days coming up throughout the year. Maybe get some of those groups of, you know, all the third-grade teachers meet at one school and all the fourth grade at another school and just kind of get down to what we do and have the administrator step away from it. Don't be in the room. Let these teachers talk and share their best practices.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Albrecht?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Albrecht, thank you for coming. Let me thank you for, you started off with something to remind all of us. You said, "All children." And that's something this board talks a lot about with our goal, so thank you for that. And I really do appreciate the fact, while you alluded, you pointed out, you beat the state in every category. We were better two years ago, which makes me actually have to ask a question of somebody because I know how the, all children are different, but has the state changed these tests again in the last two years? Is that maybe something, has every single one of our schools declined over the last two years in almost every area? So was there a change in the assessment?
The standards are the same. The tests primarily are the same. The, there were some changes in the reading tests, they became adaptive, but the standards are the same. And I've looked at that, the data from last year across the state with the adaptive test and reading. And it's sporadic. I wouldn't say it's because of the test.
So it's not like it was a couple of years ago in middle school math where the whole state went down 20 points or something?
Right, that's when the standards actually changed. Right. But the standards have not changed.
Okay, thank you.
You done? Thank all three of you for being here tonight. We appreciate it. What these guys said already, I agree with. I picked out one group and the discrepancy is so wide and I don't know why. Our black kids in reading at the three different schools scored 83, 44, or 59, and in math was 92, 44, and 45. Okay, you left. That's okay. No, I looked up and he was gone. It startled me. There's reasons for that. I'm sure there are. You can, you know, our, it seems our black population is getting smaller and you may have, you know, one group of brilliant kids at one building and that would change all of that. But that concerns me greatly as to why we have such discrepancies from one building to the next. And it's not, and it is a small group now. I mean, we're down to 12 or 13%, I think. But 83, 44, and 59, and 92, 44, and 45 is such a great difference. We need to figure those sort of things out. And there are other discrepancies. I just, that one just caught my eye. And so I trust you all will be able to figure this out, but time is of the essence. This needs to be done and we need to push, and that's why we hire good people to figure this out. So we really appreciate your continued hard work. We know you're working hard and just try and bring everybody up and all children. And I didn't mean to just pick the one there, but it just stuck out in my mind. Thank you all very much. Anybody else? Are we, everybody good? Okay. Policies. Is that going to be you, Kristen? Ms. Kiefer?
Yes, I almost forgot.
That's why it's written down, so I don't forget.
Yes. So the policy committee, along with many other committees, have met. I think one of our goals is really, and I, I'm going to step back for a minute, and I really have to commend our clerk, Ms. Garza, and Dr. McGorick and the staff. I think we have made such significant strides in ensuring that we're reviewing all policies, updating the dates and keeping it systematic to make it easier and to ensure that we're all clear on what those policies are and what they mean. So I just wanted, Ms. Garza, it just doesn't get enough public recognition for the behind-the-scenes work that goes into making us look like we're doing okay up here. So thank you to you for doing that for us. The policies tonight that we are looking at involve school board governance and operations, general school administration, fiscal management, support services and school community resources or community relations, excuse me. These have gone across these board members many times. There's been a lot of discussion around them, so I just wanted to say that and just give a high level on what we are proposing to discuss as it relates to any potential changes to policy. For the purposes of the ones we're putting forward tonight for board discussion, we're really just changing, making small tweaks for the most part. In some instances, there was a duplication with another policy already in existence, so we wanted to just sort of streamline and avoid duplication. Some legal reference updates, we just need it to be made and cross-referenced. Others, we just wanted to review and say we looked at them again this year and just update the date of review so that the public and the staff and everybody knows exactly what we've looked at and what we've had discussions about. So many of these have had no revision. As you'll see, the committee recommendations are no revision. And others are just sort of required because state codes change and we have to just make sure that we're in compliance. One new policy was added, but it really was just for the purposes of the Freedom of Information Act as it relates to people requesting information from Manassas City Public Schools. So we did add a policy. It's in line with what we've been doing, but just given the nature of things with FOIA, the Freedom of Information Act lately, we thought we definitely needed a policy. It's very detailed in terms of how to get information, so I just wanted to highlight that one in particular. Another one, we did recommend to just add it to a full board discussion on October 12 budget work session, just to ensure that the board had fully engaged with one another in the discussion about the one related to school board committees and then just some of the things that were in the policy there. So with that said, those are really the key updates. There's not a whole lot of substantive stuff. And what we would like to do is open it, I think, for board discussion, but also in the hopes that we can bring this for a vote at the October 10 meeting.
Thank you very much. And I appreciate you acknowledging staff and all the hard work they do. And I appreciate you and your committee because policy is a pain in the butt and you have taken it on very well. And just one of the things that takes a lot of time and we appreciate it very much, your committee, because when I go through committee reports, Ms. Kiefer's always got something. There's always something going on with policies, and so we really appreciate all the work you do. Is there any other discussion on these? All right. Finance and operation, energy performance contract. Mr. Hawkins?
Good evening again. The beginning of the energy performance contract agreement process started approximately a year ago. We set out at RFP asking for qualified vendors to submit a proposal to us detailing their qualifications, experience, and methodology in approaching this project. Eight firms responded and we reviewed their proposals and narrowed the list of potential firms to three. Those firms were then asked to visit Weems, Metz, and Osborne and conduct a building review. These three top firms then came back and presented their findings, recommendations for improvement, and the potential savings over the next 15 years. Based on these results, the committee agreed to recommend to the finance committee and to the school board that MCPS continue to engage this process by agreeing to enter into an MOU with Johnson Controls Incorporated. This MOU allows the vendor to conduct a technical energy and water savings audit of all of our schools, which will assist us in developing a comprehensive plan on major upgrades to our facilities, to our facilities lighting, water usage, HVAC, and systems control. This audit will be completed by winter break, which is December 20th, and we will present this plan to the finance committee and the school board in January for review and approval. This plan will be fully paid for with existing budget funds in our utility accounts and is guaranteed and bonded by the vendor. We will also be using an outside independent consultant through the Virginia Department of Mountains, Minerals, and Energy who will assist us in evaluating this plan and if implemented, verify the results are accurate. This consultant is experienced and has assisted other communities with these types of projects throughout the Commonwealth, all free of charge. The goal would be for this plan to be fully implemented by the start of the next school year. Tonight, I have with me, I have Mr. Whit Blake, who is an account executive with Johnson Controls, who can go through the attached PowerPoint and along with me answering any questions or concerns that you might have. So, Mr. Blake?
Well, good evening, Mr. Chair, ladies and gentlemen of the board, Dr. McGorick. It's a pleasure to be here tonight. I'm joined with my colleague, Dan Knox, and we're delighted to speak to you about the energy performance contracting program that we've been working with Andy and his team Energy performance contracting is widely used across the Commonwealth of Virginia as well as all the states in this country. Over 70 districts and $630 million worth of project work in K-12 alone in Virginia. The reason that... The reason that performance contracting is so widely used is because it is very unique and successful, especially in K-12 environments. We have a holistic approach when we look at your buildings and all the systems that consume utilities and energy. Another great advantage for performance contracting is that it's a budget-neutral approach, where simply redirecting funds that are currently being spent with your utilities back into your classrooms, back into your school facilities. Outside of payroll, energy and utilities is one of the largest expenditures in most school systems. This is the area that we focus. We focus on reducing that, that section of the expenditure, allowing those dollars to flow back into the school system. Your existing energy budget is permanently reduced through a series of implementation of what we call facility improvement measures. Facility improvement measures are identified through an auditing process that we will begin, hopefully begin next week. The savings that are generated are then guaranteed and bonded by our firm. That allows the payment of the program to not exceed the existing energy budget of the school system. It's also important to point out that any overachievement that the systems that we install perform belong to Manassas City Public Schools. So, updating and modernizing your schools, all the while decreasing your energy and utilities and having a impact, lessen your impact on the environment and creating or enhancing classroom environments are the goals of performance contracting. As Andy mentioned, they've been working with the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy. This is a state program that's administered to the Division of Energy. These are bullets right out of the state code. I won't read them all to you, but the most important components of this is that savings have to be, savings have to exceed all the cost of the program. This does not impact any federal or state aid. And you can use savings bundled together to fund other improvements that do not pay for, that do not pay for themselves within a term. So, higher payback items can be used bundled together to fund longer payback items like air conditioning improvements within your school systems. So, we have completed a back-of-the-inventor audit on three of your school facilities, and we have been selected to work with the school system. And if we're allowed, we would like to enter into the technical energy audit phase, which would take place through the end of the year. We'll be bringing back to you a complete program of recommendations, working together in collaboration on addressing not only reductions in energy, but enhancements to the school buildings that we've been looking at. Any questions?
Thank you very much. Do you want to make a motion? Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the memorandum of understanding with Johnson Controls Incorporated to conduct an initial grade audit with all Manassas City Public Schools and for Johnson Controls Incorporated to come forward with a project implementation plan by January 2018.
Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mrs. Kiefer. Discussion.
Couple of things, sir, just for the whole board, because the finance committee spent quite a bit of time, I guess two weeks ago now, with staff and Johnson, talking about this, going through net present value calculations, how it really works. The point in one of the slides was this does not constitute school debt. I think at some point, we did have discussions, I believe, whenever we get to the next resulting action. Does the city need to be involved? We're going to look into that, as I recall, to see what the right formality and approvals were.
So, I did inquire with our attorney, our school board attorney, and he said that we would not require city approval. I mean, we would notify them that we are doing this. I mean, we would be borrowing, I mean, a significant amount of money that we'd be paying back over a period of time for these improvements, but we would not, we would not require city council approval.
And the payback really is there. I mean, whether each of us, when we go into the restroom and use those silly things and you put your hand under them and they never quite give you enough water, the reality is it saves landlords a whole bunch of money. So...
Well, these savings that we're talking about and that when we come back with our proposal are guaranteed and they're bonded. So, we, if we don't, if we don't realize the savings, Johnson Controls is going to raise the chain for the difference. And we will.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, one more thing. I, on the residential side of this, the green homes and the energy savings, the savings is there, so I'm confident on the commercial side, it will be, will be consistent. I just wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Mrs. Kiefer?
Yeah, I just wanted to know if this audit, will this give us some information about the discrepancies that we had on our energy bills in the past?
We hope so. I mean, that's one of the things that I hope to gain out of it. I mean, there's several behind-the-scenes benefits. One is, we will have, through these technical audits, we will have a complete inventory of every piece of equipment that we have throughout the division, and it will be entered into our preventive maintenance program that's called SchoolDude. And then, it will help us produce a more objective CIP in the future. Now, things, we depend on Wes Hilton, our maintenance supervisor, a great deal to tell us, to help us what needs to be replaced, what needs to be done. This will give us some objective data to say that this piece of equipment is nearing the end of its useful life. We need to be preparing for its replacement. So, that's, that's a great benefit of it. One of the things also is that it will, maybe it will give us some insight as to why we are having problems at some of our schools. Why is Dean on such an energy hog compared to the other, other schools that we have? So, those are some of the benefits that we hope to gain out of it.
Very good. Thank you.
That was a good question. Thank you. Mr. Chair?
So, as we think about it, and some of the things the finance committee looked at, we have chillers, major bondable items in our current CIP that potentially would be taken out, incorporated this, we'd actually get them sooner. And we can actually, when the one chart was up there and talked about it, we start receiving savings immediately, and then at the end of the payback period, whatever that term is, that's negotiated, as we look at what the total project scope is, after the end of that, most of these items should have a continued useful life that we'll continue to get significant savings from. So...
So, many of these pieces of equipment will have a 30-year useful life.
We're repurposing our taxpayers' dollars to put directly into student achievement.
We believe that we can, the CIP committee is going to be meeting, we have a budget meeting on the CIP on October 12th, and at that time, we'll be presenting some, a very revised CIP based on some of the things that we hope to get out of this. This could free up millions of dollars within our CIP that we can use on other projects throughout the school division.
That's great. We appreciate this. This is very exciting. Hopefully, I'm confident that it will work and very excited to see the results.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, a second by Mrs. Kiefer. The school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the memorandum of understanding with Johnson Controls Incorporated to conduct an investment grade audit with the city of Manassas Public Schools for Johnson Controls Incorporated to come forward with a project implementation plan by January 2018. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you, gentlemen. 2017 year-end financial report and carryover. Mr. Hawkins?
During FY17, during FY17, the school board experienced unforeseen revenue reductions from the state through the compensation supplement that was deleted, I think it was sometime in September, October, long after our budget was adopted and certainly long after our contracts were issued and signed by our teachers. And the city, we lost revenues from city profits. Both of these totaled approximately $800,000. MCPS administrative staff made corresponding spending reductions to mitigate this loss of funding, which resulted in the reduction of the amount of money that we use on the fund balance, which will continue our pursuit for the school board budget to be in structural balance. As of June 30th, 2017, the school board's fund balance totaled approximately $3.5 million. Albert, can you put that chart up? The carryover request one? Next slide, please. So, we, we have approximately, we have approximately $3.5 million. Of that amount, $296,000 were outstanding incumbences as of June 30th. Those items are bills that we must pay, so we have approximately $3.2 million remaining. Of that amount, we were making the following request. At the seat, we made an error when we were preparing the CTE budget for FY18, an amount of $109,000. We're asking for that, those funds to be brought forward to make the CTE budget whole. The PCG contract, the school board approved $1.6 million contract, but once the PCG met with, and our instructional team principals met with PCG, they mapped out a schedule of dates and times of when those, when those staff would be there and to meet the needs of our students. And it ended up being $117,000 more than the $1.6 million that the board had adopted. So, we're asking for those funds to be carried over to make that contract whole. Makerspace, we had some money allocated in the budget to begin the work at the makerspace at the high school. We have about $51,000 left in those funds. We're hopefully, we're going to propose that the, when we do the CIP reading on the 12th of October, that we spend more money on the makerspace out of the CIP. We're bringing back results from our CTE coordinator as to, and the architects and the professionals that she's working with to determine what the actual cost for the makerspace might be over at Osborne. So, we're asking for this $51,000 to be brought forward. That was unspent money in FY17. Cybersecurity slash coding platform, this was a part of the CTE plan that was not fully finalized before, it was finalized after the school board budget was adopted for FY18. We're asking that we bring forward the $97,000 to fully fund the, this important and growing program for high school division and for the state. And as far as professional development is concerned, the federal government reduced their title funds and cut professional development that we had already planned and had developed, and we're asking that we bring forward $33,000 for our professional development needs. And we'll get, we'll get all of these items straight by the time we incorporate them into the FY19 budget. Also, we have a proposal to bring forward $85,000 for Executon. Executon is a, is a software program that was, is a MUNIS-based product. MUNIS is our, is our financial system. It's a MUNIS-based product that will help us not have to fill out time sheets for every substitute, every bus driver, every, a lot of our staff has to fill out a mountain of paperwork that we saw through in the payroll office, and our supervisors have to sign. This will make it all automated, where you sign in through your badge and your time is recorded and then it's maintained in an automated fashion. So, that is certainly something that would save the school division a lot of time and effort, and I think it's worthwhile. The HR auto file, it is taking all of our current HR files that we have and putting them into an electronic format so that they can be easily maintained and referred to. And Metz barrel system, we have a small amount of money there. As I understand it, Metz didn't have a barrel system before, and so, what we've done now is instituted one, and it's very similar to the one that we have at the high school, where I think they play music in between each class change. So, all of that being said, the goal turnover, the amount of funds that we're asking to be carried over is $813,749, leaving us with an area fund balance of approximately $2.7 million.
Mr. Chair? I move that the school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the operating carryover request in the amount of $813,000, $813,749.
Second. Motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. Discussion. Sir?
I just observed a waiting second reading, because several of the items up here deal with academics and to waste two more weeks. Doesn't make sense.
Okay.
Especially with the carryover items.
Has the finance committee gone over this?
Yes, we went through this in our meeting, yes.
Okay. Any other discussion?
I have a motion by Mr. Albrecht, second by Mr. Williams. That's school board of the city of Manassas waive second reading and approve the operating carryover request in the amount of $813,749. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carry 7-0. Thank you, Mr. Hawkins.